Sorry, that was me. Abby, Devin in the Zoom.
Yeah, I don't know if Paul's coming or not.
So you want to sit here still having a look at your phone?
I can't, I'm just wondering if my paper.
That was with the boxes.
Right behind Chris.
Let me move so you don't. You sure?
Yep.
All right, call the meeting in order six oh one. Stand for the plate. Good allegiance.
The United States of America, to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, adjustments.
I do have an adjustment to the agenda. That would be under business. And that would be consideration of the boys' golf team for the state tournament.
So moved.
All in favor? unanimous? So nine point four, consideration of boys' golf teams to state tournament.
Yes, sir.
Anything else for adjustment? All right, I need a motion to approve, we got a bunch of minutes here from a couple of regular board meeting and a couple of special ones. So first approve the events of the September tenth, twenty twenties, regular board meeting. Second, Mary all in favor? Unanimous? Motion to approve the minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty, special board meeting. Member Kathy, any discussion?
Yeah, just, I had some discussion. Just a note, I would like to see if we can get in the future a little bit more notes like we've done on some of our other issues when we come through. I don't think this is, there's as much information as it was in the other two ones. So I would like to make sure that we were, whoever's taking notes for that, we can get copies of that. Because we're not getting copies of the video, so it'd be better if we could have a little bit more detail in the minutes. That's all I'm asking.
Abby, is that possible? More details in the minutes, is that something you're capable of doing with the time you have allotted?
Depending how much discussion there is, I'm not a transcription.
It's noted.
Appreciate that.
Okay, motion to approve the, all in favor approving the September fifteenth, twenty twenty, special board meeting minutes. That's unanimous, and then the last one is a motion to approve the September twenty fourth, twenty twenty, special board meeting minutes. Chris, second. Mary, discussion? All in favor? All unanimous. Okay, public comments, just to make a quick note here, the public comments for our school board bylaws have pertaining to items on the agenda. And it can include items that were just added to the agenda. So anybody in person here have any public discussion?
I was on my left.
Go ahead.
I'm Sean Dershowitz, I'm at the ball club. I took the shop earlier this year. Went through kind of everything as last minute I understand under the circumstances with COVID. We've really, never really discussed thorough detail of everything that was going to be gone through this year. We went for the season, we won, as you know, we won the East West Conference Championship this last week. With that, we have the opportunity to go this Saturday and then go compete in states. I just found out at four o'clock the day we returned of our match through text message that we weren't going to be allowed to go. The decision was made, I believe, by the athletic director and a gentleman named Brian, was that be you, correct?
That's me, yeah.
After that, I just didn't understand the situation and we're just trying to get it through. And I just want to basically, the way I, I heard it through, when you guys decided as a school board that you were going to allow the golf team to go forward as long as they followed NPA regulations and so on. Well, this match this weekend is run by the NPA and it's followed all by the NPA guidelines. So I just want to know, you know, and I want to understand what the circumstances is there. And I also want to be heard and, you know, just, we want to know why they, then all of a sudden, we're not allowed to go.
Okay, so first of all, congratulations on these accomplishments so far. I just want to clarify what happened. What the board approved during one of these special board meetings dealing with the fall scores. When we approved golf, if you look at the minutes, we specifically approved golf that follows MTA guidelines and the administration guidelines as set forth that night. The administration guidelines said, and this is why Jeff responded the way he did when he asked me about it, he asked me if his interpretation was correct. And I said, yeah, that's what we approved. What we approved was we were not going to mix with other schools' kids. That was part of what the administration put in in addition to what the MTA guidelines actually said. So we are going to discuss this obviously in more detail this evening. But that's why it may seem like it was a surprise to you, but that is what the board actually approved that night. So I'm sorry that it turned out that way, but that's, that was the goal was we were not going to mix with other, with other kids, with other schools' kids. And that's why the soccer team went intramural. And that's why when cross country and golf, when that was sold to us, it was whether it was cross country course or the golf course, our students were going to be on that course themselves, they were not going to mix with other schools. So now the state tournament is not doing that, they're mixing forces. And that's why we're going to talk about it in more detail this evening. But what the board approved prior is the reason that we have to discuss this again if we're going to do something differently.
Okay. Maybe in the future we can be a little more thorough with that in the beginning and, you know, just that's my final request and that is, that's all I really have to say.
That's fair, maybe we could have had a little more foresight and we could have said, hey, if the MTA is going to mix people at the state level, maybe we need to approve that now, but I, that's an awful lot of foresight, I guess, not knowing how they were going to run that tournament.
I mean, I can tell you, I, I'm in golf business, I'm a golf person pretending here. Myself, Kyle, you know, we, we've been through all this, we've seen sixty seven golf tournaments that have gone on this summer, none of which have had any issues with the social standard and the social distancing guidelines. There haven't been any outbreaks, you know, everything has been done. And this tournament is actually going to be done on the same thing and the same criteria that the main state golf association came through with. So I just wanted to throw that out there and to say that, you know.
And I appreciate it.
There is science behind it, that it is safe and that there is not, you know, there is no chance with these kids.
And we're going to take your expertise into account when we discuss this as item nine four, appreciate it.
Thank you. Can I say something?
Sure. Boot, can you say your name?
Can you say your name real quick?
Trevor Gray.
Hey.
I'm also a middle school basketball coach, have coached several teams throughout the community. Can you get any more socially distance on a hundred and fifty acres? Anybody? That's all I have to say.
Okay, thanks.
Could I speak?
Sure.
Kim Gilbeer, I'm speaking as a parent, like clarify that as a parent of a golf team member. So as a board, your task to vote on very, very important things. And sometimes you're asked to revisit those votes and consider them again. And I think this is a chance for you to consider that. This is an opportunity for these kids to go to the top of their field. State championships doesn't come very easy for small schools. We have five kids that have qualified. Of those five kids, which is our team, three of them have also achieved individual qualification to compete for individual titles. I understand completely the safety issues and the concerns, and as a parent, we all want that for our kids. The Arrowhead course, which the Class C team will play on, just Class C. A and B play Friday on a totally different course, Class C only. Based on last year's numbers, that's about fifty five students on eighteen holes, which is about six thousand three hundred and thirty eight yards or fifty seven thousand square feet. And as far as safety goes, that's about as safe as you can get outside all the precautions you can ask for. And not inside a building with a hundred and eighty three other people. So hope you'll think about those and just give them a shot to continue what they've worked really hard for. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thanks for the comments, it's appreciated. I don't have much to say as far as the chair comments. I think hopefully as board members, everybody saw the MSMA conference is coming up. It is all virtual this year. If you're interested in attending any of the sessions, you can go online. If you haven't gotten it, I'll forward it to you after this meeting tonight. All different topics are going to be covered. If anybody wants to register for that, please let me know because I'll let Wendy know so she can get you registered. That's different than what we're going to have to vote on later for the delegate assembly. This is just the MSMA conference. So I'll forward you that email and if anybody's interested, please let me know as soon as you can. That's all I got. Chris?
Yes, I have a couple of points. First of all, I want to update the board and people that are listening on what they call the CRF funding, which is the relief funding for school systems. Last week, the Department of Education informed the school systems that we will be getting a second round of CRF funding. It will match the first amount, which was about a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars. The key point is that we have to have our application in a week from today. And we have to have that money expended by December thirtieth of this year as we do with the CRF one funds. So the administrative group has been meeting to talk about how some of that money will be spent. It has to all be related to the COVID nineteen. So we'll be looking at it, one of the items that we discussed today, just to give you an example, was the purchasing live streaming equipment so that we can live stream games. If we get to that point where we, you know, fortunate enough to maybe have basketball, schools are looking at that because we know that the fans will be limited. So those are the type of things that we're looking at. Just so you know, because that money has to be spent by December thirtieth, it's really difficult when you try to look at adding things such as software and even personnel. So we're being very conscious about that. But that has come through. The second is that, related again to COVID, I do want everybody, you probably heard around the state, there have been school systems that have had to close down for periods of time. And you notice they're all following the same procedure. If you go onto the Department of Education website, under resources for schools, you will see one that talks about the standard operation procedures for closing schools. We would have that here in RSU seventy eight, hopefully we'll never have to use it. But it is a standard procedure and we as superintendents around the state are paying particular attention to where any types of potential hotspots they develop. And again, tomorrow, there'll be another county color code and see where things happen. So that, that is something that we are paying really strong attention to because we are finding some school systems that are having to close for anywhere from seventy two to, seventy two hours to two week period. And the last thing, I know that normally policies are, have their own separate section that Kathy reports on. There are two policies that I've included in your packet. There are policies that deal with. IJJ, which is the curriculum development and challenge to the curriculum. There is a process that is followed and we will follow that as a school system when we have a challenge. And then that would potentially come back to the board. So I wanted to make you aware of those two policies. You should take a look at those. So if we do have one, which right now, we do have a citizens' challenge to a book, that is now in process and we will be looking at that and potentially looking at November or December to bring any further information to you. Right now, the process has just started and we'll be, we have our committee and we'll be looking at that. Yes?
Maybe one of you are an administrator that speaks a bit. When a classroom teacher is deciding to present a topic that could be controversial or not, when, I guess I should say, how do they go about letting the family know that they're doing this? I mean, I know as an educator how I had to do it, but what do we do? I've had people in the community this week and last week ask about our curriculum. I've told them to go to the website, but with the exception, I think of, as of yesterday, two teachers, there's not much there. And I think that's probably because of COVID and we're just getting started and some people are changing classrooms. But obviously, I know some people in the audience know about the assignment, some of them have contacted me. So I guess I'm asking is, when a teacher's going to give something that could be controversial, how does the family know? When the child takes it home and sees the assignment?
We ask, we ask the instructor to provide that ahead of time. Sometimes that doesn't happen. And we end up in a situation where we have questions. But it would, it should be done ahead of time. And sometimes what ends up being controversial or challenged, a meeting needs to be held to discuss that. And that has been done. So it was a productive meeting and we're moving forward.
Thank you.
Georgia, are you, want to add anything?
No. Chris, can I ask a quick question about those CRF funds?
I lost my hearing here.
Oh, that's okay. I have a question about the CRF funds, the second round of that. You said we got a hundred and fifty seven thousand dollars the first time around. Were you able to expend all of that money COVID related within the timeframe they had?
Yes. What we had to, what we had to do was we had to send that application in on August thirtieth, which we did. We had our projects, we did make some adjustments. And because of the adjustments, we had to send the revised budget in. I think it was, I think it was nine thirty, so it was September thirtieth. We met that too, and all those were approved. So we, we received approval on both the original application and the revisions. So those are all set. Now we have to do on Thursday of next week to send in our new projects. Those will be reviewed, that's through the GEM system, you know, through the title pod, which is different. And then once those are approved, then we will have to make sure that by December thirtieth, those are done. If we have to revise those, we send in a revised application. And what will happen is that with that, that will go to the end of the line. So if we have any other revisions, hopefully we've moved up. And the state is leaving an area this time in the CRF twos that if you anticipate going over your amount, to make sure you put that in. Because there are some. Because there are some school systems that are not able to actually use all of their money.
And that was my next question. Are you in a place where you feel that we're gonna be able to utilize this other hundred and fifty-seven thousand?
My answer is yes, because what we're finding is that the smaller school systems, because it's based on student count, didn't receive some of the larger amounts. I mean, there is one school system that received three-point-one million the first round, three-point-one million the second round, and believe it or not, they're having difficulty expending that, not because of spending the money, of the, what they're trying to purchase. For example, I'm just gonna give an example so everybody knows. One school system put in for the CRF one to purchase ten new school buses. They were approved for it.
Really?
But they can only get maybe two by December thirtieth. Because they don't make them that fast. And we're not the only state looking to do this.
So those buses were COVID-related in the sense they had to put more vehicles on the road to compensate for the numbers of kids in the vehicle at any time? Are we gonna put in for a bus or are we all set there?
We're all set for buses, Jeff. We talked about that. Yes?
Chris, can you clarify one thing because what Mary said and what you said, it got a little confusing there that some might have heard. We've been approved for the money to spend. We haven't actually expended the money yet, but we have to complete the expenditures by December thirtieth and complete the projects in order to use that funding.
Correct, and be invoiced and billed for it so that we can pay the bill.
Okay.
That's what's happened. I'll go back to my example with the buses. They can invoice you for the buses, but if the buses aren't there, that's a saying, no. No. You can't bank the money. That's really what it ends up being. Because some school systems wanted to use that money to offset their budget. And that is not allowed.
Georgia?
I just have a couple of things. Working really hard on this next phase in process of getting the high school and middle school, school students in four days a week. Elementary will start next week. We've been moving around classroom spaces, bringing desks in, setting them to the right heights, getting our new staff settled into their new spaces. And I think we're,
And from the students I've talked to, there's been no issues with the masks and the changes that happen when we all come back to school and they all really appreciate the chance to come back four days a week. And we've started to set up class elections and council elections, so that's starting to move forward now that we're all in the building.
So as the golf team has already said, they have been doing really well with their scores. Trevor getting the score of eighty-seven, Tucker scoring eighty-nine, and Luke scoring ninety. The cross country had their first run the other day in a rain and it went pretty well. We were in the medium group compared to the other schools, but a really great job for our first-time cross country.
All right, thank you. All right, committee report. Kathy, you have anything to say?
Not really, because we don't have a meeting this month, but on November three will be Wednesday, November fourth, at CCA.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, finance committee. I'll take that one. We, I think we beat the CRF, it worsened up, so I'm not gonna go into any more of that. Takeaway is the administration is well aware of the timeline to use it and also the availability of the funds and they're, they're working on their magic with that. The only thing, we looked over the financial statement for this month and what we expect, everything looks good as far as the amount of money we've spent to date so far. Facilities is the only one that shows a shortage, but we do that because we did a bunch of spending upfront, took advantage of the kids not being in school initially. So then everything looks good with that. We also approved the heating bids. We had one propane bid and one wood pellet bid, so we took that. And then of the two different types of heating oil, we just took the least expensive of those two and approved those. So that's, that was it for finance. Ginny, facilities?
Right now, for next week. There are two, I think, and I can be corrected on this, two rooms that are gonna have the classrooms. One is pre-K and the other one is Title I room. Yep, it's actually the old language room. Yeah. And again, spaces in there are not quite what might be in a regular classroom, although it's a good-sized classroom. The, the gym floor is being buffed this week and set up for another year of use. And it is something that's done regularly this weekend, Columbus State Weekend, so that the air stays clean. They are still cleaning between classes. As, what's I think interesting is the middle school decided rather than moving the kids, they moved the teachers so that cuts back on some of the cleaning work that has to be done. And just regular maintenance has to continue. And right now, we don't really have a meeting date set up. We've been kind of going with the flow and seeing, you know. So we'll have to do that also, find a time that's gonna work for everybody. I believe we have new members or we have committee assignments or not yet.
New members or?
Oh, okay. So the old members are still where they were.
Everybody's, yeah, you talk about committee assignments? Yeah, everybody's where they were.
Okay.
That's me. So, can we figure out the meeting?
I think it'd be better to, I don't want to take this, we could meet after and decide a time that works.
That's fine for me.
Yeah, because it really is Jeff that has the tightest schedule in some respects. So I talked to him about that and we're, you know, we know we need to schedule something that will work. Thank you.
All right, thanks Ginny. Seth, committee leader report?
Yeah. So, you know, middle school, really well, get the kid back in the building, middle school followed, you know, that, it's, it's going well. I'm glad we, you know, the plan's working. It's been a nice, like, ease into it. The kids have been amazing. You know, the student numbers go up. I thought there might be some more behaviors to start, but that really hasn't been the case. The kids were wearing their masks, so that's been really nice. You know, Jeff and his crew are working extremely hard. It's, you know, we're moving rooms and like, we think we got it and then somebody sends you an email like, oh, how about like lockers for this group? So we're like trying to figure out how to like substitute for lockers. So, but that is pretty much ready to go. The lunch staff's amazing. Sports staff teachers, everyone's just been working hard. The elementary worked hard last. It's yesterday, today, and tomorrow, and we're looking really good for Tuesday. You know, one thing a lot of parents have been asked about, like here and that are here, is like the drop-off and stuff. We are gonna see how that goes Tuesday. And we have to make some adjustments. We're gonna look at line lengths and what's happening, you know, so many people are driving that's making these lines and that constant flow of traffic, we're looking at, Talking about, you know, meetings, RTIVs, talking about our students, how to do interventions. We're scheduling the NUI testing, you know, like the curriculum piece. You know, last year in the spring, we were right in the middle of really starting some curriculum work and that all got kind of put on hold. And it's part of my job, working with that, so excited to start thinking about that, how we're gonna move forward, continue the work we're doing. The website, you know, that is part of our plan to have it on there, but before we put anything on there, we have a lot of work to do. So it's just nice to feel like we're working in education again, not crisis management. And peace is still there, that's really nice. Yeah, just getting ready to have about two hundred and forty people in the building on Tuesday, so. Yeah.
All right, thanks Seth.
Okay. Seth, when do you anticipate the testing, or in Georgia, the testing will be complete? So the board's able to get an update of, a snapshot of where we are for fall of twenty-twenty versus where we are for fall of two thousand and nineteen? I know standardized tests don't tell the whole story, but having at least some snapshot data to determine, at least over the years, the NUIs seem to be a decent way to measure with a lexicon to be able to see where people were a year ago and where they are now, so we can see what slippage, if any, has occurred due to being checked out for COVID.
Yeah, I mean, I could say we're, we're trying to finish our, our first round of, of testing. Elementary's done a lot of the preliminary testing already, but the NUIs, where do we think it's at, at the end of November, will be done? So we could potentially have some data for you guys, like maybe in the December.
So a December meeting possibly?
Really, the last six, See what the last six months, what the real impact is. Once we do that, yes, so it'd be, we'd test in November, it'll be December, we're meeting January, we're meeting, we can have a nice, you know, snapshot of where we are.
So the testing that's been done so far is kind of preliminary, preparing for the NUIs, kind of evaluating and?
Possible, they're possible.
Thanks for clarifying.
It's not the end of it, it's just informative so far.
Okay. Thank you.
First appointments, resignations, nominations?
Yes, I have three listed. Tina LaRusso, the licensed counselor, the therapist. Ashley Ferrara, the grade four-five teacher, and Jackie Haley for the gen ed tech position that will help with the math and some of the other programs that we have.
All right, get a motion to approve Tina LaRusso as a licensed counselor, Ashley Ferrara as a grade four-five teacher, and Jackie Haley as the gen ed tech.
Could I, sorry.
Go ahead.
Could I just ask something?
Let's do the motion and then can we?
One at a time.
What's that?
I think we should, it's personnel, I would suggest we do it one at a time.
Okay, I should have asked first. I just think for parents here and for board members, could you tell us something about these three candidates? I think we heard about the specialists maybe at our last meeting, but does anybody want to know about them? What their credentials are or what they've been doing or where they came from?
I think it's important.
I mean,
My understanding is we should do a motion and then discuss, is that not accurate? Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Tina LaRusso as a licensed counselor? Kathy and Mary, okay, discussion? Georgia?
Tina is coming to us from Connecticut. She will actually be starting a week from Monday. She, she is a real go-getter. She's done a lot of work with youth and, and, you know, like, for example, like a women's empowerment group. She does, she's done a lot, she's involved with the community. I think she's gonna be a real powerhouse in our building. We're really looking to have her. And excited to get somebody with credentials, pretty exciting.
What are those, what's your degree on?
She, she is a licensed counselor. She has a master's degree in therapeutic, you know, whatever you need to, to be, become a licensed counselor. She's, she's definitely got her credentials in order and she has been working for a medical services team. So our student services team is made up, it'll now be made up of this licensed counselor, our social worker, our behavior specialist, our guidance counselor, our school nurse, administration, and Joanne.
And that is involved in that team?
Yes, Joanne is involved in that team. And so, yeah, it'll be a cohesive team. They all play very different roles.
But they are always talking and working and collaborating.
Absolutely. Yep.
And Ms. LaRusso is licensed, she's incoming from Connecticut, so she's licensed in the state of Maine already?
She'll, yeah, she'll, yeah, she's, she will be, I don't know how that reciprocity, or if there is reciprocity from state to state, but she's, she's definitely credentialed, I can tell you that.
I can't hear you.
Oh, sorry.
I just need to comment that I think it's important when we do these, that, you know, it'd be nice to get a little narrative that was, you know, they're from there, they come from here, they got a degree from this place, that type of thing. I think it's a nice thing to know. I mean, especially if they're new to the community, they maybe went to a certain college, some community member here set this connection. They come from a more welcoming community and also then the board also knows a little bit more information. So just a comment for future, obviously that wasn't required for tonight, we didn't ask for it. I don't know if any of the other board members agree with that.
All right, all in favor of Tina LaRusso as a licensed counselor? That is unanimous. Motion passes. Motion to appoint Ashley Ferrara as a grade four-five teacher. Come on, Chris? Any second? Kathy, thanks. Question?
Okay, Ashley. Ashley has been with us. She started out in our special education department of the med tech three. She has a degree in early childhood education. She is also has, is in the process of getting endorsed as a K to eight teacher. She has that be credits to do that. She worked with Shelley as the pre-K teacher last year and I don't know where she graduated from, sorry.
Georgia, where is she in her, her K certification process?
She's working with the state right now to get her certification.
So is she eligible for that certification?
Yes, she is.
Okay.
I can read, she actually sent a really nice email to all the parents of the kids in the room. She graduated from Florida State University in Hampshire, two thousand nine with bachelor's degree in education. She worked in education for eleven years from pre-K through high school. And she has worked in special education also, and she has taught both first and third grade.
All in favor of approving Ashley Ferrara as a grade four-five teacher? unanimous, motion passes. And then a motion to approve Jackie Haley as a gen ed tech. Chris? Thank you.
Jackie Haley has also been part of our staff. She's worked in our special education department. She is transferring into the gen ed department as an interventionist at the high school level. So she will be working with students one-on-one in small groups and supporting classrooms where need, where needed.
All in favor of approving Jackie Haley as a gen ed tech? unanimous, motion passes. All right, new business. First, I want to discuss the movement to five-day in-person. All right, you have this, first, I want to discuss the movement to five-day in-person weekly schedule here. Open discussion. Thanks Seth.
Yeah, so, well, it's been two weeks to high school, it's gone well. You know, we had one room that, this child would have like thirteen or fourteen kids in the room, I've been walking around the rooms, looked comfortable, the kids are still spaced out at six feet. Like I said, the kids have been great, really did, they're key to this whole thing of how easy it is, and it's been really easy. There is few barriers, I think the kids are all excited, the teachers are excited to have them, it gets easier, and we still have a few remote kids. But no, it's been working really well, middle. Schoolteachers, I guess, had to make the biggest adjustment, they, you know, they're moving to the rooms, on cards, the technology's working well, so it seems to be going, going really well.
Yeah, that was a big adjustment, I think, for the middle school, to have teachers, you know, moving around, and that, there was a quick turnaround that that had to happen for, so I, I really want to shout out to them for being so flexible and making that happen so quickly. And I'd also like to thank the board for the, for the opportunity for, for you all to listen to us and support us in this, in this phase-in process. It's, this has been, it's meant a lot to us, not an easy process, there are a lot of moving parts to this process, from, you know, the staff and their concerns, to parents who, you know, want their kids in, and then parents who don't want their kids here, and, you know, so there's just a lot of dynamics at play, so I really want to thank you all for, for supporting us in our decisions. So, you know, I think, I can't, we can't speak for the elementary, obviously, because they haven't started yet, and I think, you know, the biggest piece for the elementary team, and something that we have to really take into consideration is that they are still, you know, their, their remote learning platform looks different than middle and high school. So they are not only having to check in with students, but they're having to record Zoom lessons, they're having to do a lot of things in addition to teaching. So I think when we, when we really talk about the phase-in process for those elementary teachers, we really have to keep that into consideration, because it's an extra level of work that has to happen, so. I think we had talked about maybe revisiting this at the end of the month, and I would really, I would recommend that we see how we, you know, how elementary phase is in, and then we reevaluate.
I just wondered, how many are staying remote, and how many have you turned, how many have turned to homeschool, from the high school and stay on my hearing? I mean, I've heard 240 kids are going to start Zoom, so.
It's, well, that's including staff.
Oh, that's 240, that's okay. So how many are fully remote, going to stay remote?
It's about 50%, I believe, in the state.
Of the entire population?
No, 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 the ones, the ones that are remote right now. We have had some students opt to come back for, with circumstances that were kind of out of their control. So, yeah, there are some families that are, that are staying remote for this, I can't give you the exact number right now, I don't understand.
Seven, five in the school. Three or four from the middle school, and five. And it's really the first study, elementary, double, most, next challenge, three more kids, it's basically most worrying, I'm saying, so, you know, even if it's happening, but whether you have one or five remote kids in your class, at all, and you have to make the same number of instructional videos, as opposed to same number of assignments on CSO, you know, there's that level of work when there are remote kids at the lower levels, it's quite extensive.
And, and what about homeschoolers?
We have about, I think, it's about, we have about 10.
That hasn't really changed, like, this decision hasn't impacted really the homeschool families.
The two teachers that are teaching K one and the four, five, having somebody who's done upper class, six, seven, and eight together, that is a very big piece on your plate. So I would hope that we all, and you all, help these two people, because going from one to two, and then having two curriculums, and then having to Zoom, that's a lot.
Yeah.
And any, you know, whatever they need, they should be certainly reaching out to you, don't, you know, I always hate to see people just left and thinking, you know, they're going to be able to do it, well, sometimes they can, and sometimes they can't.
Yeah, that's a really.
So it's a, you know, it could be a big struggle.
And part of this, we talked the last time, was on the 30th, we had the response intervention meeting, the RTI meetings.
Right.
So we have a really, you know, it's going to get changed a little bit, but for our support, support staff that are going to be in those rooms helping, we've really looked at the groupings, and there's going to be a good plan for how they cycle through the most needed areas when they have to be there, so, yeah.
Okay, I, I said that was ending, but I just have to ask this as well. When we left in March because of COVID, we were told that many of our students shut off, they didn't go to school, basically, actually Seth, you told us that. Fifty percent had checked out. If they failed at that, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I don't know if children fail, but am I assuming wrong that maybe this interventionist that has been hired, are those children who failed, are they going to be able to start where they left off and maybe pass? I mean, if you're talking high school kids, and they are seniors, or they're juniors, and they checked out when they were a junior and a sophomore, they may have difficulty graduating. So where are you with that? Maybe we didn't have any failures, but I guess if we didn't, we might not be looking at interventionists.
Yeah, no, no one, no one failed.
That's great.
Yeah, but high school did have a significant checkout rate towards the end, we had some that checked out on March 14th. But no, we, we have credit, it's called credit recovery right now, so no one failed, they got incomplete, so you either got to pass, pass or distinction or incomplete. And just this week, the, I'm getting emails of like, these kids are done, these kids are done, these kids are done, they're all working, and some had a lot of incompletes, so they kind of prioritize, like you said, to their graduation.
So they kind of kept that where they left off?
Yep, and then, so, and some just had a unit, some had a lot, for instance, in math, some kids, we just said, okay, you're just going to start here or roll to the math course and do the stuff you didn't do. But yeah, I know the kids are working hard on it, the interventionist, you know, we had this at Tech in the budget, and last year, we kind of had to make some room for some things, and but it's going to, this position is so important, it's going to be with row, with some of our groups, like Mrs. Hathaway has, one class, I think, five different classes in one group, so they'll be in those rooms, study halls, this person's going to be in study halls, and it's going to be a very focused study hall. I'm doing weekly student concern lists for myself, so I can reach out to parents, and I'll share this, and that person will go to study halls, and like, pick these students, like, you know, what are you working on? Or at times, they can be pulled out to a separate area, so yeah, that person is going to wrap up credit recovery, and hopefully, moving forward, when I generate my list each week, it's going to get smaller and smaller, that's my goal, so yeah, it's going to be a really important position.
And I'd just like to speak to the element, at the elementary level, as to how they're addressing that issue too, because Amber, you mentioned that our four, five, and our K one splits will need, you know, an extensive amount of supports, and they will, and they will have an extra person in their own room helping with them. But, but really, at the elementary level, our teachers all teach multiple grades within their classrooms, they've been doing that for years. And, and that's why, you know, we ask for the level of support with all of the aides that we have to help support that in small groups. Sometimes we have a, a second grade student who steps up to third grade for math. Or, you know, so, so we have that flexibility built in to address it, and, and really, you're, you're right, in that teachers are, are just meeting kids where they're at right now.
Thank you.
I recognize that K five is, you know, hasn't even been fully implemented yet, to four days a week, and so that's a work at heart, but given your current thinking, are you still comfortable with middle school and high school being in the building five days a week at, after the end of the first term? Is that, was that your initial goal?
Hmm, that's a good question, I mean, I think if we were talking about going five days a week, it could happen a little more, a lot more seamlessly at the middle and high school levels. Elementary, as I said, is a little different right now, but, but yes, I would support that, I, I can't speak for everybody, but.
Well, I, I guess I was thinking that what I read was that the implementation plan initially was sort of thinking the first term would be a benchmark for when maybe kids could be in the building five days a week, and clearly, you know, middle school and high school is a different issue than, you know, your K five experience, and and you get to have them in the building four days a week, you know how that's going to go. So, when you get a lot of teacher input into?
Oh, yeah, I have, I have a lot of teacher input already on the Wednesday, the remote Wednesday piece, yep.
So it would be really good for us to hear when you go to making that recommendation, really what the, all the criteria is for why you're making that decision, and you feel comfortable with us moving forward?
Absolutely.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you for that update, very thorough, I appreciate it, a couple of things, our next regularly scheduled board meeting is five weeks from tonight, November 12th. So if there was a plan brought forward, it would have to be looked, it would be voted on, in theory, unless we schedule a special meeting five weeks from now, plus, based on our previous timelines and stuff, we're looking a week or two, or a few days past that in order to implement, based on how we dealt with the middle school and the high school from hybrid two to hybrid one. So that puts us seven or eight weeks out, and obviously, trying to find some balance, I've heard a little bit about the Wednesday remotes, I've gotten some comments from the public about it, I've done some of my own understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, but on the Wednesday remote days, some of the, your, the staff is also catching up with the remote-only students, even doing like visits on lawns and stuff, and getting some teacher instruction, one-on-one, those type of things, and that, so it's not really a free-for-all. As some people, the reason I'm saying that is because there, it is ranging, everyone has their, there's different talks, so I wanted to clear it up, because I have talked to a couple of your staff who said they're doing, they're going out, essentially like the old house doctors, and doing visits to these students that aren't getting that student-teacher interaction. So the, it sounds to me like the middle school and high school, in theory, could run almost indefinitely with this kind of four-day plan with the Wednesday, but it sounds like it's an inordinate amount of work for the elementary K through five to do the in-class, and then do the record videos, because it's not a case in difference, and based on studies, it's not necessarily the best thing for children that young to be doing that. So, what would be interesting for me to see is, does it make sense to have a discussion to say, you know what, we're going to pick a date to go five days, and at that point, we'll support, but in a limited fashion, those who choose to still remote, but more of like packets and information, kind of like what we did in the spring, so that the teachers can 100% focus in the K through five of delivering traditional instruction five days a week, I don't know if you've thought about that way, I don't, I know I think outside the box sometimes about stuff, but I was just wondering if that's something to discuss about, and does it make sense for us to schedule a special meeting, again, in two weeks, to have a discussion of that, so we're not six, seven, eight weeks down the road on a plan there, because I personally experienced it, just, my wife helps out a kindergartner on Fridays, and I can see, by the look at my wife's face at the end of the day, it's, it's challenging, so I can't imagine some of these parents that are doing that three days a week, plus trying to keep their jobs and do all those pieces, and I'm sure it's very frustrating for the students, teachers, for what you said, this recorded lesson, deliver a lesson, send the packets, make sure everything's getting everybody, herd and cats, and all those things. So, to me, I would like to see a meeting in a couple of weeks, and then kind of a clear plan on how to deal with that part, I'm not necessarily concerned from what I'm hearing about middle school and high school, but I think those K through five kids, I'd really like to see five days a week at school.
Yeah, I think you raise a good point. I think what the state is challenging us with, though, is that we do offer a remote option, but we also have to make sure that it's, it's serving, you know, these students are progressing as well. So we, we really are sort of obligated to try to give them the best educational experience we can, and, and have them still move forward. So that, that obviously will have to be lit, put on the table, and, and I think we can get creative, absolutely.
I can hear you loud and clear in that, but it's kind of like, with a lot of things in life, we're saying, here's our neighborhood, which we are providing a full educational experience. If you feel personally you're not comfortable to put your child into that scenario, here's the alternative, it might not be as good, but we're doing the best we can in order to deliver the most educational experience to the most amount of students. So I think that would pass the straight face test out there, I mean, I'm not an expert in educational law, but I think that would, you, you can check the box of you doing the best you can.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree, I think we really would have to look at kids on an individual basis, though.
So do you recommend we have a meeting between now and November 12th?
We, I, I, we had initially said at the last meeting that we had hoped to have a decision by the end of the first quarter, in hopes of maybe transitioning as close to the first, the start of the second quarter as possible, so.
The first quarter ends November 5th, correct?
Six.
Same as November 6th?
October 29th, or is that a board meeting to discuss that?
That works, yep.
Uh, one thing about, I think it's fine if we have a policy of, oh, don't say it's fine, I think one thing that I have a policy in order to say, the people that are remote, this is all you're getting now, because we need to focus on the people in school, I find it hard to believe that there'd be a lot of staff, even, even if they were given the green license to do that, that they'd be willing.
I, I, I don't disagree with your comment at all, but I do feel that the sooner we can get the most amount of kids back in the school, for especially at the younger level, the better we're going to be overall educationally.
George, just a clarifying point, the kids who are learning remotely, even, are any of those falling under the umbrella at the Department of Ed of homeschoolers? Or, no, so they're not, so they'll really consider a whole different classification of remote learners?
I, well, we do have homeschoolers that are in the building that, that can't, can't have the option to remote in for certain classes.
Okay, so you do have some homeschool kids who are taking advantage of the TikTok and, and some of those things. Okay, but most of this other cohort of twenty-some kids are considered remote learners?
Yes.
All right, go ahead Seth.
Just to get back, you know, if anyone's curious about the remote, like, why we developed remote plans, we did three more, two, three more, I don't know, the second or third section, we designed our remote plans to meet the state requirements of, you know, progress, some connection to teachers, attendance.
some connection to teachers, attendance, assessment. So that plan we have was the mid, like what we thought we could do is still meet those requirements, because what we did last year does not meet the new requirements for your remote option.
When you talk to other people outside of this community, one of the things that I always hear is those kids who are at the low end, um, may have special needs or whose parents can't help them, just are unable to for whatever reason. And I think one of the luckiest things of, and it's always been how people talked about the school, that kids don't fall through the cracks here, or it's very hard for them to fall through the cracks. And I think that's a piece that kind of has been talked about. And at some point, you know, I was thinking it would be good to have a report on how you're doing that, but it sounds like every piece of it is helping those kids who, you know, didn't get the kind of education they would've gotten if they were in school. So that's why we like our school.
Mr. Chair, would you like to entertain a motion that we have a special meeting scheduled for the 29th?
Yeah, we're gonna set that up.
I don't think it does. I think we might just set it.
We're gonna vote 29th, it's a quad.
It's a chair cast question. Nine-two and nine-three, gonna take a long time or it's all pretty quick because I thought with all our parents we got here, he makes it to that last issue.
Sure, we can do that. What Chris is saying is we'll move up to nine-four of the, uh, the agenda. Move that up in front of the other stuffs. So if parents want to get out here after that, they can do that. You got a motion to consider, uh, the boys' golf team to go to the state tournament?
I'd like to make a motion that we consider the, uh, the golf team to go to the state tournament and comply with the guidelines that have been outlined by the MPA that were previously approved by this board.
Hold on a sec. We, we approved something different the last time.
Right, we approved MPA and RLS restrictions. I've made a motion to approve for the state event for just the MPA rules.
Okay.
That's my motion.
Second? Kathy, discussion?
Could we just clarify the difference between the MPA guidelines here and the restriction that we added to that?
The restriction that we added to it was, as it was presented to us for the cross-country team and the golf team, was that we were not gonna travel and mix with kids from other schools. That's, that we were gonna be on the course on our own whether it was cross-country golf. That was the difference between the two.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a different interpretation of that?
I don't exactly know for sure, but I tried to watch the video for it and it wasn't available for it to find out that information exactly, because I remember the motion was approve the MPA guidelines as they were presented and through, and then I remember us doing the cross-country because first someone wanted to do them all together, I think you did, and we broke them into separate, approved each one separately, and then we went down through MPA, that got voted no for soccer, RLS restriction got voted no, and then the third was the intramural one that I proposed.
That's true.
So my understanding was that that was how we did the golf and the cross-country as well. So I was surprised in the minutes that it was like that and I didn't want to argue at the time about it because I haven't been able to review the material, that's hence why I asked for a little more detail in a minute and to be able to at least get a copy of, we should be able to get a copy of the recording of this, it's recorded on Zoom and there. And some other meeting, I'd like to talk about some of the Zoom protocols, but for today, I would like to just suggest that we do, I feel like from what I've researched from the MPA and from what they're using the main state golf association tournaments, I have a couple of clients I deal with who have, that, that, uh, I know that do golf tournaments down in Southern Maine where there's a lot more exposure. They've had no incidents at, at, at private country clubs or in any of the public courses that I'm aware of, that I feel like the MPA guidelines that have been outlined are sufficient. We have a coach who was, was involved in the process, understands it, is, is going to be on top of it there. I would say a caveat of entertaining, if, with your permission, Mr. Chair, that those two to participate, if they're willing to, as an extra precautionary measure for the school to, after the tournament, either get tested or choose to self-quarantine in order to make sure post the event, there wasn't any exposure due to somebody else at the event not properly following procedures.
All right, I got two things. One is, I specifically remember Jeff was over here in the gym and he specifically said we would not be mixing with other schools before we voted, and that is what we voted on. So we, we did actually vote on something different than the MPA for golf and cross-country. Second thing is, you're saying now if we approve this per MPA, we are gonna have those kids isolate for two weeks?
No, what I, what I said is, I said that I would like to ask, that we have permit, your permission to ask that those students, if they, if they'd be willing to get a test afterwards to help to mitigate, but I'm saying we're gonna follow the MPA rules. That's all I asked for in the motion.
Are any others, uh, are any other schools hesitating about participating in the championship?
Up to this point, no, ma'am. I have not heard of any classes that have qualified that are in the tournament.
And are any of those school systems gonna do anything as an additional precautionary measure to...
I do not know that, ma'am, because I'm not, I don't, I don't understand.
So you don't know, those kids are gonna have to isolate? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
It's all, yeah. I mean, I don't understand. If anybody wants to speak, you can do that. Hold on a sec. Go ahead, sir. Was anybody that was involved that made that decision on how you guys are gonna vote about that, they actually played golf and they actually played golf this year and been out on the course and then actually participated in any of that and seeing how the state has come up? I don't know if you remember, but Janet Mills shut it down and we as the golfing community, we worked really hard to set these rules and set these standards to make this allowed because there's a lot of involvement in this. Sugarloaf just hosted a tournament two weeks ago, the AJCA, there was a hundred and twenty kids all in around, there was no problems. Some of the rules are you can't touch the flagsticks, there's no touching of anything that anybody's gonna touch, you're playing your own golf ball, okay? You have the option to wear a mask, you're outside, you know, social distancing is in effect. If you were to came to our match or if anybody was allowed to come to our match and we spectators were allowed to come to our match, like all of the other schools were allowed to, to do, they would see that these are going on. They would see that this is all under, you know, and everything, all these kids, safety is the main concern for the MSGA and the MPA. It's not like we're just going out there, having the kids go out, start high-fiving each other, exchanging scorecards, you know what I mean? It's not like golf is a game and not only that, I, I coached golf for eleven years. I've been in nine state championships as a coach. These kids don't wanna communicate with one another, they're competing with each other. They don't, they don't wanna look at each other, they wanna just play their game, get through it and then move on. So it's not like they're going in here trying to be social with one another, it's not like they're gonna go in there and start breaking the rules, you know? These kids, it's golf. And I don't, I mean, does anyone here play golf? Does anybody play golf? Anybody on the board play golf? Has anybody played golf in the last year? Last week? Has anybody played golf in the last week?
I guess what I'd like to say is number one, I think it's wonderful that you're in a position that you're now gonna be in the state championship. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Number two, I understand that a game of golf, and I appreciate that it's, that it will be competitive in nature when you're there. Number three, any decision that we made previously, we were trying to err on the side of the safety of our, safety of our kids.
I was never aware that that decision was made when I took the job. I took the job via text message at eight o'clock in the morning on a Friday, you guys decided on a Wednesday. I got hired at two o'clock in the afternoon on a Friday and I started on Monday. I have not been given, I didn't sign my contract until a week later, I still don't even know what I'm getting paid this year and I've been informed that. So I mean, there hasn't really been any, we haven't been informed of that yet, so this is all new. This is getting, it's a little bit adversarial and I don't think that's appropriate because like Mary was just trying to say, everybody here is trying to do the best thing for the whole school community. We're discussing this, we're revisiting it because we still wanna do what's right for the whole school community. There's no reason for this adversarial approach to it at all. Georgia, the last time we talked about the fall sports, you recommended that if we went with the MPA guidelines, that we were gonna have to isolate, that the athletes were gonna have to isolate and, and go remote. Do you still hold that opinion for golf or is that, is it different?
So the administration and the RSCA said this is a low four and we, congratulations to all of you. We, um, we support the kids moving forward with the tournament, but we would ask that, um, to ensure that we do keep all of our, um, students in the building safe, all of our students, that they would, they would be wearing masks when they're not actively in play, which is what MPA is saying we have to do right now.
I, I spoke to these parents and I think, like, they're all, most of them are here. I've spoken to them individually, I sent messages to them and all agreed that they would golf or whatever you would like if, if that's the case. They just basically want a chance to go represent our school and represent our town and, you know, it's a good opportunity. This is one of the first times Rangley's had an opportunity to go to the state championship.
I agree with you.
And, you know, I think this is some normalcy for these kids and I think it's a really good opportunity, so.
For the sake of going further, can we pull the board on a motion that I have in front? It's not a vote, just to hold it, see if we have the votes to go ahead forward or we add further discussion based on accepting the MPA guidelines?
I, I think we can just make a motion to follow the MPA guidelines right now.
Okay, great. I made that motion, so I'd like to call a question.
Can I have a second on that motion? Go ahead, Chris.
I asked the athletes that are standing there, if you would need wear your mask at all times. The reason being, except when you're going up obviously to, to play the ball or putt or drive, whatever, it's not going to help. The reason being is, right now, the state of Maine public education is we get caught times where we have a student that might be at a tech center or come into a different school and then the entire school's affected. I play golf, I live right next to JW, one of my friends is Kyle Lad, I grew up, my family grew up with the Lad, so I know all about golf. And I know you can maintain the distance, but all we're asking is, when you're not playing the ball, please put your mask on for the sake of your other classmates. That's all I'm asking at the superintendent. Okay?
No, thank you.
Deb Lad wants to know if the administration does ask, says would the board and administration cover the cost of testing, follow the tournament if they do go?
I, I think we don't, why don't we make the motion to follow the MPA guidelines? I don't think we're saying we want them to get tested, is that correct? Is anybody saying that?
No.
Okay, so let's just keep it as simple as we can. We have a motion to let them play in the tournament per the MPA guidelines. Is there a second?
I second.
Mary, any more discussion? All in favor of letting the golf team play in the main state tournament per MPA guidelines? We have one no vote, I'm sorry, it's unanimous. Motion passes. All right, hey, thanks for coming out.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, um, the next, uh, item is the, uh, the MSBA resolution information. We got an email to us, um, with the agenda, it's also in our packets here. If it's possible not to read through the entire thing, I would love not to do that. But if anybody hasn't seen it, please read through the first one here, we'll give you some time to do that if you need it. This is, so the MSBA gets together, they, they get these, um, I don't know what you wanna call them, addition objectives or whatever, that they wanna send to the state to get some approval from the legislature for it. What they want is, and what's gonna happen next, is we're gonna vote on a delegate from our school district to go down there and tell them whether we approve or disapprove of these resolutions as they've written them out here. And with that information, that's what they're gonna go to the, uh, to the state with. So the first one is, uh, development of distance learning plan. Does anybody need time to read through this? You haven't read it?
I'm not gonna report on it though. I mean, I actually felt all three of them were well-worked and I was trying to find any here. And I think the third one, what was the third?
So there's a, there's a distance learning plan, there's the stronger family support for education, there's equity in education, and then there's a board meeting remote.
And that's basically what I was talking about, where our kids aren't as likely to drop too. But I felt that was a good, strong one for us to support all of them though.
Okay. Is there, if we don't have to go into this any further than is necessary, everybody is in agreement with the, the resolutions that they've outlined here, we don't need to do anything further than to just let the delegate that we choose next.
No, anyone's question, are you available, Mr. Chair, to be the delegate for that?
I'm not gonna be the delegate now.
I, I, I just have to make a, maybe since I've been in the business for forty-plus years, I have to make an observation and Chris, bear with me on this one. The second one about building stronger family support. I, I mean philosophically, that's a wonderful thing and I guess what I'd like to know is historically, what has ever come of, of that comment? I mean, what are they really doing to support family involvement with their kids in the schools, particularly at this critical time? How is this gonna manifest itself other than a political statement?
I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you. Not that I'm being cynical.
Read, read between the rails on that one.
No, Mary, you're right. I mean, it's, how do you say no to that? Obviously, everybody would like to see it, but how do you put it, how do you implement it? I don't know if the answer's that.
It would be nice to see some programming or some funding or something that, that would along with supporting that, but I guess that's the next step in the process.
It's your money, right in your mouth, this type of thing.
Yeah.
Does anybody have any more discussion or as a board, are we gonna approve these four resolutions or delegates? What's that?
I make a motion to approve all three.
We have a second? It's actually four. There are four. The last one is the remote.
Oh, sorry about that. It, the whole face threw me off. Okay, yep. Um, one, two, four. I make a motion to approve all four.
Is there a second? Thanks, Claire. All in favor of approving all four? No? Okay, we had, uh, all opposed. Kathy, do you want to have further discussion about breaking these up?
Well, I don't like the boy needing remote participation.
Okay. No, let's just vote them on individually then, just to cover our bases. So the first one is, uh, a motion to approve. Second? Mary, all in favor of approving the first resolution?
Thank you.
Unanimous, passes?
Second resolution, so moved.
Second? I'll second it. All in favor of building stronger family support for education, approving that resolution?
Good God.
Passes.
All right? Motion passes.
That's putting in education, so moved.
Second? Kathy, all in favor? Unanimous. And then the last one, uh, board meeting remote participation, a motion to approve that one.
So moved.
Second? I'll second it.
I feel like that's setting the precedent that I, I don't think it's a good idea. I think it should be just in an emergency.
Anybody else? I, so I see the, um, it would be nice not to have to get an emergency type approval when something happens to, you know, to do it. I, I see the utility in it. I also see what you're saying, Kathy. If it belongs to any traditionally, you'd be the second person and that's the way it should go down. Uh, any other discussion on it?
One caveat that I would say, Kathy, if you look at the last sentence of that paragraph, it says if the local school board vote, votes to adopt the practice. So there's another loop to go through in order for us to, as a, as a, as a group. So I'm okay with the motion to go forward, but it still has one more procedural loop because I feel if we're gonna do Zoom meetings here, there's a few things we need to fix because we're not, we're not there with how we're doing it right now.
I just assumed we wouldn't do it except for, um...
So Kathy, you're interpreting this as we would have to go to Zoom only?
No, no, I just think then that it's an excuse.
Right.
People not come or it gets to Lucy-Loosie and I think we should just go the traditional way, except if there's an emergency. And this does, uh, absent a health emergency.
Yeah, it does say that.
So the question is, do we wanna allow to approve at the whole level? We still have one more fight at the local group or we choose not to approve?
What Chris is saying is we would still have to adopt a policy, our own policy, whether we would do this and if we did do it, under what circumstances?
Would we do it strictly for...
Right.
Well, maybe.
But do we wanna do, when we go before the delegate assembly, does our representative, our delegate, do we want to allow other schools to do this if they want to, even if we don't necessarily want to? I don't know.
I don't know. You know, I just don't quite feel any of that. Yeah, I was just gonna move anyways.
You gonna go down fighting them?
I was just, I rarely have two cents to say, but this time I do.
No, I, I appreciate it. Um, well, we can put it to a vote. All in favor of approving the last resolution, more meeting remote participation? Okay, we've got two, three, four, five in favor and also Deb in favor, all opposed. Kathy and Amber are opposed, motion passes. All right, the, so the thing we need to do now is take those resolutions we just approved and choose a delegate to, uh, it's a remote, um, assembly this year. They don't have to go in person, but we need to designate a delegate and an alternate in case that person can't make it.
I make a motion we approve Mary Richard for the forty-plus years of educational experience. She probably has the proper techniques to stay away from such an event.
That's also, uh, apropos because she volunteers.
I volunteer.
Here we go.
All in favor of, uh, Mary as our delegate? Jenny, are you, uh, no?
I'm sorry, I was checking.
All right, that's, uh, that she asked. We also need to approve an alternate. We have any volunteers to be an alternate?
Deb will volunteer, she says.
All right, great. All in favor, uh, I'm sorry, motion to approve Deb as the alternate. I moved. We got a Claire as a second, all in favor.
Thanks, Deb.
I was gonna say it's unanimous. All right, Mary and Deb, thank you. We'll get that paperwork, uh, filled out and get a.
Okay, great.
I think that's it. Can I get a motion to return?
So moved.
Second? There's Jenny, all in favor. Thank you. Seven twenty-one.